You know, guys, I think I'm gonna start this meeting about half a minute early. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. It's Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. City work session agenda. We're going to start out with Clean and Green Litter Blitz Wrap-Up and Drawing with Barb Brinkman. But I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Bruce. I have to go do a proclamation for the torch run. You just heard the sirens going over there. So, I'm gonna jet out of here for about five minutes. Okay? Thanks, Barb.
Oh, thanks for your help. You were on a pickup crew, so... Yeah. So... How does this work? Here? There we go. There we go. Good. Well, I just appreciate the city helping with this. This was the fifth one, and we braved cold and snowy weather and extended the dates a little bit. And we had, you know, as a project of the Clean and Green Subcommittee of Safe and Attractive Neighborhoods and Business Districts, forty different groups and businesses participated. There were about fifty different areas. We had people maybe not sign up, but go out and pick up stuff. And there were several groups who took two or three zones, several individuals who worked on more than one group. And we had reported from the feedback online, which was needed, is that we had three hundred and fourteen workers, a total of five hundred and five hours. And there were seventy-two-plus unreported bags of trash. Who knows how many that was because people picked it up on their own and didn't always tell us. Or even the ones that signed up didn't always get back to us. The bags of recycling were sixteen-plus. So, great community effort. Watertown just likes to keep it things looking nice. And so, we had the whole intermediate school out one day covering a lot of areas. They worked with the Bramble Park. Numbers are kinda going down, but I think people are just doing it on their own. That's how I see that. And so, you know, I think it's they're getting the message that we live in one spot here on earth, and we need to take care of it.
I think that we're just getting so efficient at it now that we're getting more garbage per hour.
And maybe there's less out there. You know, less and less bigger things. Well, whatever. Couple of things on that. Well, thank you so much to our partners, the City of Watertown, Mayor's Office, Sanitation Department, Street Department, Police, and the Watertown Area Community Foundation where we pick up the supplies. And the Chamber of Commerce has donated our prize of a hundred-dollar Watertown bucks. And this, you know, media really helped with the public opinion and Watertown Radio and KXLG. And so, thank you to these groups. I'm just kinda scrolling through them. And had a lot of big groups and some small groups. There's still things to do. If you see an area, if you're out walking, take up a bag and pick up as you walk. You know, scouts, Methodist kids. A lot of different participation. It's good to carry a litter bag in your car. Here's your light note.
Okay, I'll bet nobody knew that I had a twin out there, right?
We wanted to have a little light note today for you. So, Glenn and daughter were out quite a while covering a big area. Interesting thing. We had a hundred-dollar bill found, plus some other currency.
What'd it look like, Don?
I think it was mine.
Yeah. And baseballs. McKinley third graders found baseballs. And the most common item, cigarette butts. They just don't decompose. They don't. They don't de... They just don't. You know, and if they get into the water system, it's not good for the fish and then gets into our food supply. Something to think about. So, different things that we're still involved in, look for those, take use, take care of them. Reduce, reuse, recycle. And it is against the law to litter. Portenance one-one-point-zero-four-zero-three, up to a hundred-and-seventy-dollar fine. So, let's all help keep Watertown beautiful. Thank you so much. And now... So, Mount Marty Kids will be getting the prize. And so, thank you all very, very much, and keep on doing your personal litter pickup. We appreciate it. Thank you.
And you too, Barb. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you to Barb. And Carla was your cohort in this too, right?
Oh, we have a committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd also like to say, not that I'm suggesting that it be an organized effort, but, okay, we got the job done this spring, but obviously that litter reaccumulates in a hurry. So, encourage people that, you know, keep a lookout all summer and fall and try to stay on top of it.
Right. And if there is any group that wants to, you know, take on an area permanently, you know, we could arrange for a little sign to get made, I think. You know, it's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. I think this has been a great success. I think since this has started, it sure made a big difference. So, thank you. Next on the agenda, we've got Lake Campesca Master Plan Outlet Silt Trap Proposal. Roger, did you wanna visit about that one?
Yes, sir. I don't... I don't have any fancy graphs for you guys tonight, but once again, I'm here to talk about the Lake Campesca Master Plan. And one of the recurring themes of the many people that I've spoken to about this is stopping the sediment and nutrients from coming into the lake in the first place. In my list of ideas, building some sort of structure at the inlet outlet of Lake Campesca, where as the silt drops out, we can reasonably go in and maintain that structure and collect that sediment before it gets washed into the lake proper would, in my mind, would be a very good first step in taking care of that. With me tonight are representatives from Clark Engineering, Don Weigel and Justin Peterson. They've come with me to maybe put a reality check to some of the wild ideas that I come up with. You guys know that I can be a little bit of a non-conventional designer. If you have questions about the structure, I know we've talked about this before, but basically, going into the channel, it could be a concrete structure, it could be a rock structure, it could be sheet pile. That's something that a feasibility study would identify. And the idea is to be able to remove a lot of the sediments from that area, collect in the future the sedimentation, get it to fall out in that one specific location, and also be able to maintain the sandbar that will keep developing as a product of longshore drift. You know, wind blows out here, and the lake itself will move sand around. If we can come up with a combination structure so that we can keep that area clean and clear, that will definitely help with the sedimentation problem and the nutrient influx.
You know, Roger, I apologize. I didn't get to hear your very first opening statements on this. But what I just wanted to mention briefly, the reason why we're here, you know, of course, is for the betterment of Lake Campesca. But in our thought process, you and I have had numerous conversations, it seems like we should almost try to stop the sediment coming in before we start trying to do the dredging to get it out of there. You know, 'cause if you have that event, you have some big event that comes through and pushes it through. So, folks, that's why I asked Roger to be here tonight, is to... Maybe we need to get an engineering firm on site that can take a look at the lake and see what we can do for sediment coming into the lake. So, I just wanted to... And you probably said all that before I got here, but...
Not in so many words, but yes.
Sorry about that. All right. I'll let you go now.
Yes, and I did bring Clark Engineering with me. We've had some discussions in the past. They are interested in taking a look at that structure, whatever procedure we'd like to move along with that. They do have experience in that field, and I feel that they would be a good check, a reality check, and see if something can be designed there.
So, I think maybe you can bring those guys up and just give us a little idea, you know, 'cause you had talked about different types and whether it's just one type or whether they're gonna come back with different ideas for us, numerous ideas. Let's hear from those guys. Come on up and state your name, and let us kinda get an idea of what we're doing here.
My name is Don Weigel. I'm with Clark Engineering. I'm actually in the Aberdeen office, and Justin Peterson is here in our Watertown office. What my connection to this is, as Roger mentioned, we were part of a project for the City of Aberdeen where we constructed a rock filter berm on the Elm River. The Elm River is the water supply to the City of Aberdeen, and they continually had problems with the intake structure being clogged with sediment in spring runoff events or primarily spring runoff events. The sediment load coming down the Elm River was pretty high. The inlet structure is in an oxbow of the river, and so, the sediment would be carried into that slower water area and fell outright in and on top of the inlet to the water treatment plant. So, we worked with the city and with a partner consultant out of Minneapolis that we have worked several times with. Their... What they bring to our team is the, to throw out a big word, hydrogeomorphology. And that's the study of sediment transport in a river. And so... But they have a couple of people on staff there that have a lot of experience with that, and they were part of our team to come up with the answer to constructing that filter berm and trying to eliminate or greatly improve the sediment transport or sediment problem at the intake to the water treatment plant. That project got... Construction was completed in 2015. Probably first real test of it occurred this spring when the Elm River was at, not at flood stage, but very high. And it was in those conditions in the past where it carried sediment into the oxbow. The treatment plant, of course, regularly tests turbidity at the intake. They also, this year, tested the turbidity out in the Elm River Channel. And the water at the intake, I'm sorry, I don't have any numbers for you, but it was much cleaner at the intake than out in the river channel. So, the berm was performing as it was intended. We don't know if the berm or a berm like that would be the best choice as a solution at the inlet of Campesca, but we would team with those same individuals and bring that expertise that they have into the feasibility study that we've talked with Roger about, and try to come up with alternatives that could be considered for a sediment control structure at the inlet at Campesca. We'd have to do some hydraulic modeling of the Big Sioux River and the inlet at that area. We, of course, don't want to change and wouldn't get permitted to change the hydraulics such that suddenly we were holding flows in the Big Sioux that, at this time, flow into and out of Campesca. So, there'd have to be modeling and as part of our study, along with costs, and the best choice to achieve the sediment control, the ability to maintain it. I guess that's what we would look to work with Roger and you folks on, is developing those choices.
Don, what do you do with the sediment once it does build up in the river if you do stop it there? How do you mitigate that silt?
Well, in the case of the structure on the Elm River, the face of that rock berm is self-cleaning during higher flows. So, the river flow washes the sediment off the face of it. Now, we do have as part of the construction, there's an access road on that berm so that, if needed, the city can get equipment out on there and remove sediment from the face of the berm if necessary. It was not necessary to be able to remove the sediment from the river itself. The river's carrying the sediment, you know, or was in the past carrying the sediment to the intake at the treatment plant. I mentioned that intake was in an oxbow, and Justin has some pictures where you probably can see that. The river was starting to take its natural course, which would have been to erode the neck of the oxbow. At some point, the river channel would have cut off the oxbow and bypassed that area. Anyway, the city has Aberdeen in the past, had to spend some effort to reinforce that with riprap. But in the case of that structure, the sediment is washed off the face of the rock berm in the higher-flow vents. If it gets to the point where too much builds up on the face of the berm, there is an access road where they can get equipment out on there to clean it. Again, I wanna be clear, that's an option that we'll evaluate in this study. It may not be the right choice, given the conditions at the inlet to the lake. I think Roger mentioned, the other possibilities might be some type of a concrete structure that would manage the sediment. There are a few options that would be studied and looked at. And that, again, is where we rely on those experts out of our partner consultant. Those are the fellows that know how to control or manage the sediment. That's not our expertise in Clark Engineering.
Typically, how long does the study take?
I think we propose ninety days. So, ninety days. We would intend to come back to Roger's group and you folks with some alternates and some results from what we've come up with, so...
Does that... How is that ninety days impacted based on the amount of flow in the river? 'Cause our river will go from flowing to almost not flowing versus the Elm up there is a...
Well, as part of the hydraulic analysis, we'll look at historical flow data, and there's gauging stations on the Big Sioux. That data's available to us. That'll be input into the model that we'll have to develop. There are some models that have been completed, hydraulic models by the Corps of Engineers and FEMA, but they are downstream of the inlet of the lake. And so, we will have to do some more work to actually model the conditions at the inlet to be able to analyze that.
Don, I'm sorry. I was gonna ask you about the Corps. It seems anytime you get into these lake projects going on, the Corps always pops up, and then that adds a whole new list of items that we need to consider. How does that play in? Are we okay doing this? Can we do this without the Corps' approval? Where does that all fit in?
Well, at this point, that'd be part of our study, and we would have some, you know, once we arrive at alternates or options that you might consider, we'd be in discussions with the Corps about how they would consider that, how much of a challenge it might be to get that permitted. We had to get this berm permitted at Aberdeen. It's in the Elm River. That's not necessarily... We had to go through the permitting process. The study won't be getting through the permitting process, but we wouldn't recommend an alternative to you that we felt you would never be able to get permitted, so... And also, that's part of the hydraulic analysis. Again, we can't change the flood conditions with a structure. That's not gonna fly. The Corps would not approve that kind of a situation, so...
Is the inlet and the outlet the same thing in Elm, where like ours, where the water flows in and then comes back out the same way?
It is not. The river flows past there. And in the case of that project, the only real need in terms of the volume of water is to maintain enough water for the city to draw it for their treatment plant. And that's part of why I mentioned that this type of a rock berm, in the end, may not be the best choice for the control structure. That's something we have to evaluate because we, again, we can't change the hydraulics at that location. The volume of flow is gonna have to remain unchanged. We just are gonna have to come up with a system to control the sediment.
Yeah, that volume of flow, this is kinda piggybacking off of Mike's comment. Obviously, it would be interesting or it would be nice to know what, if any, impact this has on the entire Big Sioux system as it runs through and around Campesca and through Watertown. You know, I mean, I just was curious as to what your studies would show about that because Mike said, you know, sometimes it's over the top and sometimes it's just a trickle, and so, we wouldn't wanna do anything that would exacerbate that in any way, so just...
Right. We would have to... We would have to have developed an alternative that, especially in the normal or higher flows, doesn't change the condition. And also, that we aren't trapping water in the lake and starving the river in low-flow conditions. We have to maintain an equilibrium in some fashion there.
Is there... Do you have some idea what an engineering study, right here again, what an engineering study approximately would cost?
Our proposal is fifty thousand dollars.
And what did that project in total cost? Just out of curiosity.
Construction costs?
Yeah.
Just short of two million dollars.
Okay.
And are all those projects about the same cost, Don? I mean, if that one is two million, would the other projects, or are they all different?
I don't think necessarily that the cost of this one is going to translate directly to what might end up being the recommended alternate in Campesca. A lot of that's gonna depend on the size of the structure that we determine is necessary at the inlet. There's a lot of work that went into being able to build that. Some of that might be similar to what would have to be done at Campesca, but until we get into some of those hydraulic models and studies and determine what the sediment control structure needs to be, I just don't have a good sense for that.
Don or Roger, I'm assuming that if there ever were a dam of some sort built further up in the watershed, that would impact or change the effectiveness or the usefulness of what we'd be talking about here?
Well, I can't speak with much knowledge about the Big Sioux. Roger can do that. But less than five miles upstream of this structure, there is a dam on the Elm River. And then, there are at least two more upstream of that. And then, several miles upstream is the Elm Lake Reservoir, which is a dam that controls the flow in the Elm River. So, I think the sediment loading in the river comes from runoff of the adjacent aglands in the spring, high moisture and snowmelt, that kind of thing.
Don, is that structure, is that publicly accessible? Do they fish off it? Is it... Is it off limits?
I chuckle because right now, it's off limits. And it's off limits as the water treatment plan is off limits, part of the Homeland Security Act in the past. There is an effort by some folks in Aberdeen to try and get the city to open up some of that area for fishing and public recreation.
I might be up in Aberdeen soon. I wouldn't mind driving by and looking at that. Can I drive down the road and get to it, or is it totally off limits?
You... I don't think you can see much of it from any of the adjacent county highways. So, you would need to... I'm sure the city water treatment folks would be happy to show it to you. Give us a call. We could make arrangements for that. But it is not close to the road.
Doesn't the police department have a drone?
Actually, if you wanna... I think I can get you... I could get you a copy of some drone footage, 'cause there was some taken during the construction of this. But if you just wanted to drive by, you don't see very much from the highway.
I thought maybe, Don, where you were going was meandered or non-meandered water up there.
Yeah. And if you wanna get into that, don't call me, but...
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I absolutely appreciate it. If there's no more questions, Roger, I want you to stick around, 'cause I have some other pictures I want you to put up for the Big Sioux, if you could. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I think what's gonna happen now is we are going to be discussing this as a council if we feel as though we should get something put forward in order to help Lake Campesca. And once we get an idea of what it is, then, of course, we could start working on our CIP plan and start budgeting for a project like this. And that's kinda something that we do, you know, as a city. We have that long-term CIP plan. But it's kinda like planting a tree. If we don't get something... I mean, we would've loved to have had this done twenty years ago, but now is probably the best time. Spencer, could you give these to Raj for me? This was brought to my attention again, Roger, and it deals with the Sioux River. And back in two thousand and nine or ten, we had this same conversation about what our river looks like. And as you can see right now, you take a look, the ones there with the... Oh, that big log in there, that's the trussel down there by... Is it McKinley Park? Right next to the Elks? Kinda gives you guys an idea of what we're looking at, what people look at every day on that river. One of our concerns are, really, is if you have... We've always been said, well, if there's a big water event, it's just gonna flush it on out of here. And I doubt it very, very much that that could happen. So, I'm hoping that at some point in time here in the very near future, we can also start taking a look at the river. And Roger, I think, you know, you've always worked so hard on the northern side of the river and stopped the phosphates coming in and things. It would be good if we started taking a look at what we have inside the City of Watertown and start getting them cleaned up. Have you got any thoughts on that?
We've had some preliminary discussions with Game Fish and Parks and the Park and Rec and the Forestry Department. What we're trying to work out is the difference between water impediments and native habitat was one of the Game Fish and Parks' issues that they had come up with. We were trying to get something going this winter so that we could get in and remove some of the deadfall over the top of the ice. I apologize, that kinda fell through. We did do a survey all the way through town last fall, I believe it was. There's lots of sediment. There's... This isn't the only location with issues. We're really trying to find a decent solution to go in and take care of this. Of course, like everything else, it takes funding, and...
It does. But I wonder if there isn't a simpler way that we can break it down into different segments and let's say, let's start at Fourteenth Avenue and start working our way through, or get rid of this hotspot right here and then start on Fourteenth and take a couple, two, three blocks, or whatever. That's all I'm kinda saying, is maybe we have to take it in smaller steps rather than looking at the big pie.
Didn't we set aside some money to do some of this a few years ago, and did any of it ever get done?
You know, it was set up before, you know, before I was mayor, and I don't recall if it ever was spent or if it ever got used. Shelley, do you recall that? Shelley, do you recall that? You know, because there was money set aside, the council did. It was never used, yeah.
Well, gee, if you'd give me the account number, I'm sure we can spend that money. We can definitely make that, you know, basically, it comes down to funding. It costs money to get someone in there with an excavator to pull that stuff out and dispose of it properly.
It certainly looks like it's, the problem is really twofold. One is what comes down the river. But if you go along there, look at the banks of that thing. There's so much clutter, trees, downed branches that end up in the river that we're kind of self-inflicting ourselves, and it's not what comes down the river. Now, sediment does certainly, but a lot of what you see there and what you end up seeing there comes from ourselves on the sides. It really does. And that needs to get cleaned up as part of this, so.
I think that was the intention originally, until things got sidetracked away from it, right? Is that my understanding? I hang around that area really a lot. So anyway, it changes a lot in that area, and Mike is right. It goes from everything, from those trees falling in to people contributing to it, oh, to adding logs, to adding rocks, you know, things like that. Kids throw things off the bridge, under the bridge. I'm wondering, too, if we can't focus on areas where they're near the walking path or where people actually see it as it goes through town. And have you seen our flowers?
No, I have not been over there.
You have to come over and see them.
Excellent.
So you could tell people about that project, too, if you wanted to. It'll help a lot with that whole area and the runoff and just the appearance of it.
I kind of think it would be nice, Roger, if there was a way that when these guys are working on the Campeska project, you know, the engineers, maybe we could look at this river and take some, just some shots at it and say, okay, let's focus on certain things like this one by the trussel there. Maybe we need to focus on that and get that stuff out of there. But then, let's go further up and start working our way down.
Some of the largest impediments are between 3rd Avenue and 10th Avenue, behind the zoo.
Mayor, can I ask, Roger, a question that goes beyond the river, but is all kind of connected a little bit. But we talked a little bit about master plan for Campeska, and we talked about the potential of some type of a, well, whatever you want to call that structure, for a sediment control. But is that the extent to which we have thought in regards to actionizing and possible items for a true master plan for Campeska?
No.
Is there more to it than that device? Can you share anything along those lines?
When the Upper Big Sioux Project was started 20-something years ago, the thought was, let's not worry about Campeska as is. Let's put all of our resources towards the watershed area directly to help stop that stuff from coming down to begin with. The founders basically set a 20-year time limit, said, we're going to work really hard up there for 20 years before we start to look at Campeska. Well, that 20 years is up. I'm not going to say we're completed doing all the work we can up there, but it is getting harder as the years go by and the funding dries up. So looking at the lake proper, you know, working with the H2O20 people, there's people that want to dredge, there's people that want to dig a new channel, there's people who want to build a marina, you know, all these things, we're really looking hard at to try and figure out which ones are reasonable, which ones are affordable, and what steps we should take to go through it. Right now, the first step is stop what's coming in, and hence the discussion this evening with the inlet-outlet structure, sediment trap. The next step is to take a look at the nutrients in the lake. Is there a way that we can reduce those? And hence the discussions I've had with you with the phosphorus removal facility, whether it be an algae base or filtration base or something, you know, maybe we're not quite there with the right plan yet, but that's our next step. And then after that, we're looking at increasing accesses for the citizens of Watertown. Maybe more fishing piers, maybe taking dredged material and building piers or, you know, anything that we can access, give more access to the people of Watertown, to the lake, in the process of cleaning it up even more and making, just making it nicer out there for people to use. That's where we're headed with this. You know, the master plan is my concept right now. Definitely willing to add anything to it that people would like us to take a look at.
It seems to me, though, that there's really, I know they can interrelate based on what you do, but to me, there is a distinct difference between the quality of the lake and what we do with it versus recreational opportunities such as a marina or piers or whatever. My understanding was with the master plan was, it's more focused on the quality, preservation and restoration, so to speak, of the actual lake itself. Not planning for the additional access or recreational. I think there's, to me, there's separate issues.
You could very well be right. In my perspective, if you want to get the people of Watertown behind any kind of water quality program, you need to include something that they can get behind as well. They don't live on the lake, so why would it matter to them how clean it is? Well, if we make it cleaner and we provide more access, well, then they'll care more. That was my thoughts.
How much of the phosphorus comes in off of the land area, the lawns, the homeowners around Lake Campeska? How much are we contributing to that?
That I do not have a solid number for, but anyone who does not use phosphorus-free fertilizers is definitely contributing to that. We've had promotions and media binges on trying to educate people not to use that, to cut that down. But yes, it is also a factor in that.
Could you, you have those numbers somewhere, don't you, of what the estimated contribution is?
Yes.
Is that anything you could get out to us?
In the next day or two, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be right now, I think, but it'd be interesting to know that. I know that we went through that at a period earlier, went through some of those numbers, but I think it'd be interesting to review that as part of this process again.
Okay.
Anything else? Well, thanks, Roger. I sure appreciate you coming down. I think we'll have some further discussion about getting an engineer on the project and see if we can't get something done and look forward to the future and clean it up.
Sounds good. I've got one more question for you, Roger, as long as you're there. The lake has come up considerably this spring, what, probably close to two feet, something like that? Well, whatever the amount is. Do you have any kind of sense how much of that was attributable to runoff that came in versus just the overall water table rising?
That's been kind of interesting this spring. We were 36 inches below full just before the ice started breaking up. The lake jumped six inches within a week or two before the river started flowing, which is telling me that the aquifer started pushing water in from underneath. Then we came up, we're one foot below full now, so we came up another 18 inches, basically from the fixed weir that we've done as channel watered into the lake itself. The second six inches came in quickly because the gates were open. The gates were shut at that elevation, like they're supposed to be. And then it's been trickling in. We've gotten a couple inches of rain, and that has definitely contributed. And some of the immediate drainage area has contributed. But the lion's share has come down the river.
So how long was that weir broken? Do you got any idea? I mean, we found out about it as a council, probably a year ago now, and we got that fixed.
I want to say 11, 12. It ran around.
That long?
And just by observing the repair that we have made, it's really easy to understand how that happened in the first place. As soon as the, it's breached twice. As soon as the first breach was repaired, it's flat out there, guys. The water just hits that level and then spreads out, finds an easy way around and digs a hole. It has not started doing that yet, but who knows what Mother Nature is going to throw at us?
Yeah, because when you do look at the overhead pictures, I mean, there's everywhere, it's just all over the place.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, anything else for Raj, you guys? Thank you, Roger. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, Justin, we're going to talk about the library content filter. And there's going to be a request later tonight to get this filter actually in place. And if you want to just kind of get a start on this, this would be good.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to address this issue. You know, I think the fact is, in terms of the main driver, the person who's done the most work on this, it's really kind of been, it really has been Spencer, Peter Boyle, the team there, and the IT department has done a phenomenal job working with the library board, working with Mike Mullen, the library director, to come up with a software package that is comprehensive, that helps meet their needs. And I'll just lead off briefly by explaining kind of what those needs are and then allow Spencer to explain really the meat, the substance. When this idea was initially broached, I think it was fair to say that the library board, the library director, you know, wanted to be absolutely certain that certain key values of the library were maintained. There was a recognition with them that there needed to be something done. There was a concern about protecting the minors in our community from the possibility that our wireless internet, our wired internet, could be used as a means of harassment or as a means of obtaining obscene imagery. And there actually had been a report of certain information being obtained from the wireless there at the library that was particularly concerning. So there was a large, there were some concerns, there was an event, and so there was decided that there needed to be some kind of a response. Now, the library, I think it's fair to say, on the other hand, also had a concern about First Amendment openness to information. I think their purpose, their mission statement, if you will, places a great deal of emphasis upon the open transaction of information. So really, what you had was a concern rooted in the First Amendment, openness to information, as well as a concern about obscenity in communities and the impact that that has upon our youth. So it was with that underlying perspective that we looked at not only software, but a policy that would go along with that software to achieve those objectives and to do so in a balanced fashion. And I believe that we've really gotten to that point, as evidenced by the fact that the library board approved the software package that Spencer is going to lay out here, as well as the fact that the library board approved the policy that went along with it. I'll see if I can find that here real quick. Pardon me, it should only take one, just a few more seconds here. So in looking at the legal landscape here, obviously, we're concerned about First Amendment protections. We were concerned about state law that required libraries to be proactive and to ensure that certain images wouldn't be viewed by minors. We also had concerns from the community, frankly, about the possibility that these, you know, obscene images could be viewed by minors. And so to that end, this policy was adopted along with the software. The policy really goes to explaining what it is the library provides in providing internet service, that the library and the city of Watertown are not liable for the provision of this service. So any sort of virus that they download on their computer, if they use the wireless, you know, that would be something they'd be liable for. And also, the concerns about improper use of library internet resources. Those are all dealt with in this policy. So it performs multiple functions. It protects the city from a liability perspective. It announces what users can expect from this service. It also allows for, you know, it explains the filter, explains the terms of use, what you can and cannot do on the internet, and also explains how a person who feels that something was improperly filtered can unfilter that particular media that they seek via the internet. And as Spencer will mention, you know, it isn't a precise 100% all-the-time science. It is something that, you know, may require some websites that are not obscene that accidentally get blocked to be unblocked. The library staff have been very accommodating in that respect and are willing to perform that function. So if you have any questions about the legal, I'm happy to answer them, but I think Spencer can really get into the details, technically speaking.
You ready for this? This was a unique challenge, something trying to protect people. We had to figure out a way to determine if someone was over the age of 18 for this multi-layered filtering policy to work. And it took a fair amount of work to get that resolved. And what you'll see is a number of items on there. We're using the library's main library card software paired with reservation software paired with an active directory and a content filter company called Cisco Umbrella. So it's pretty, there's a lot of moving parts there, but we got it the way that the library task force that we built felt that it needed to be done and protected the First Amendment rights as well as patrons, what's the word?
Protected patrons from obscene materials.
Well, and they're worried about banking, you know. What would happen with HTTPS traffic is it, usually it decrypts it and then says, is this Wells Fargo? Okay, yeah, Wells Fargo's okay, you can go. And then it re-encrypts it. Well, they didn't like the thought of us breaking that encryption on data that isn't ours. You know, if you work at the city and you go, you know, your Wells Fargo account, we break that encryption and we check it out and then we re-encrypt it and head out. No problem there, but since it's kind of a public entity, we wanted to be, we wanted to tiptoe around that. So Justin hit on pretty much everything. The task force was created with city staff, library board members, and citizens of the public. Just, I wanted to make sure that that was known, that we kind of made sure that the group had, we had a wide variety of people in that task force.
Spencer, what does the school system use, you know, at the high school? I mean, they're all laptop-based up there, right? And do they have controls in place within the school district for this type of thing?
They do, and I couldn't be for sure to tell you. They've usually got some kind of firewall. I know Lake Erie Tech uses a Palo Alto system. It would be similar to where, it's a little different than what we're proposing here, but similar.
Yep. I just wanted to echo Spencer's thoughts about the public participation. Really, you know, this was a great example, I think, of citizen participation, the importance of having a popular perspective on things. It really helped move things along and helped us, library staff, legal, IT, kind of get out of our narrow frame of reference, so.
Now, is the Wi-Fi up there so somebody can pull up next to the building and get it? Or do they have to come inside and get a password and be able to access the Wi-Fi? Or is it just, you don't have to be viewed or?
So as far as the content filter goes, is what happens there is if you're connected to the Wi-Fi, we're going to assume you're a child. It's a little tighter, tighter content filtering with Wi-Fi because we don't have access, we can't tell, we can't pull that data and say, oh, this is Spencer's computer. We have to, so we have to assume. Now, if you're an adult and you want to be filtered less, you go to the lab and you sign in. That's kind of the idea. Now, as far as the Wi-Fi system currently, the way we've kind of worked through that is, it's very hard to contain Wi-Fi. So could people, you know, go outside the building? Yes. But one of the things we're doing to discourage that, especially after hours, is we set a timer. The Wi-Fi goes off and the library doors are closed so that you can't go there at midnight and start downloading stuff. And then on top of that, we also put rate filtering on there so that even if you did want to download something, it's going to take a while, it's not going to be fun.
That's what I was wondering, because lots of people, they'll go to do their illegal downloads on something that is not their own, obviously.
Yep. Yeah, but our goal was to block some of that too, in this process.
They really did think of most everything. I mean, it's impressive.
Spencer, I assume, okay, we get this in place now, I'm assuming there's, there's got to be updates on an ongoing basis. I mean, who, who monitors this or who updates this or what's, what's the future hold for this?
Oh, that's a good question. There, the, the way this works is it's a, it's a DNS filter. So basically, when you, when you go to WatertownSD.us, is, that has to get converted into a number. And there's domain name servers that do that. So basically, what we're doing is we're saying, we're, we have to pay this DNS company to filter for us essentially, and that's a yearly cost. And I, and I think it was around $2,500 yearly for this filtering. And that includes the software renewal as well as the Cisco Umbrella filtering software.
So Mayor, is this being planned for under the library's budget? Is that how that's working?
Well, this is, this is the problem for tonight. And we're going to be bringing that forward to you guys this evening. This is something that has not been budgeted. What we would like to do is see if the library would be open to use their library fund to pay for this initial, I think it's about $8,000, isn't it?
Yep, I think it was 83.
Yeah. So it's a little over $8,000 to get this initially up, up and running. And at that time, in the 2018, 19, and beyond, we can continually budget this and it would be in the library's budget, yeah, at that time. So tonight, before you, you will, you will be asked the question, you know, do you want to initiate this now, which I think it's important that we do, especially through the summer months now. But where is the funding going to come from? And as I mentioned, I would like to see it come out of the, the library board fund, but we have to ask Mike if they are willing to do that. And if not, we have to look.
So it would be contingent then on that?
It would be contingent upon the funding that, that Mike's, Mike's board or Mike Mullin at the library would allow us to use $8,000 out of there. I think they got a couple hundred thousand dollars there to protect our kids for this, for this project. Any other questions about anybody on currently where we're at on this? I want to thank you guys, and I know Nick Amon was very instrumental also in helping you bring this forward. And I think this is really good timing to get it now that the kids are going to be at the library all summer long. If there's no more questions, I'll let these guys go. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Okay. Well, that kind of wraps up our, our work session at this particular time. So what I will do is I will adjourn this meeting and we will be back at 7 o'clock for the city council meeting. Thank you.